I think that's everybody. Hector, I'm ready when you are.
We're ready, Mayor.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and call the Talent City Council regular meeting of November 20th to order. Roll call, please.
Councilor Colleen.
Here.
Councilor Panamarev.
Here.
Councilor Greider.
Here.
Councilor Pessizo.
Up here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Parra Miller.
Here.
Mayor Airsled.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Anybody? Seeing none, we'll go on to item number three, which is community announcements. Staff.
Mayor and members of the council, can you hear me okay? Thank you. Just a few announcements here and a few more under city reports. But the holiday gift tree is up at City Hall. And the event helps local families have a memorable holiday season. You can come into City Hall and pick one of the ornaments off the tree. And then on the back of the ornament is a little note about a family or an individual who needs some help with having a good Christmas. The one I picked today is a six-year-old girl who is hoping to have a good Christmas with a scooter and Polly pockets. So you pick this little item off the tree, and then you go to your favorite store, pick these items up, bring them back to City Hall. Contact Colleen Bradley at City Hall or one of the people who work at the front counter. If Colleen's not available, and turn the items in. They get bagged and wrapped and get delivered ultimately to the individual who put in their request. So it's a great project that the city's been participating in for about three decades. And Colleen Bradley in our Public Works and Community Development Department has been active in that her entire career with the city. And is to be commended for her fine work in that project annually. Other community announcements is that there will be a tree lighting with Santa on December 6th in the vicinity of Town Hall. As we know, Town Hall where this event is typically held was damaged in a fire and that facility is not available. But Christmas continues on, so there is a collaboration on putting this event together with the Ashland Community Health Foundation. And Talent Maker City, who's starting at five o'clock, is going to host a ornament maker project there at their facility over on Talent Avenue. Then that's for children, and those children can then take that ornament and place it on on the tree there at Town Hall. And then enjoy a festive event nearby at the Talent Historical Society at the museum where Santa will be available to chat with them and have an enjoyable evening there. Other, one other event that I'll report is that Leaf Drop is scheduled for November 24th and December 8th at the Valley View Transfer Station in Ashland. I have some other city reports later, but I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you, Gary. Any other community announcements from the council? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to speakers heard on non-agenda items. Do we have any speaker request forms tonight?
Mayor, we have a speaker request form from Jason Clark. He would like on both an agenda item and a non-agenda item.
Very good. So let's go ahead and bring him forward for his speaker request on non-agenda items. And then after, after this agenda item, we won't be accepting any more speaker requests. Forms. All right, Jason, state your name and city for the record, please.
Yeah, this is Jason Clark from Talent. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, and we'll be setting a timer for five minutes.
Okay, I, yeah, I don't see a, a place to switch on my camera, so I'm sorry. You'll just have to look at the owl picture, I guess. Um, yeah, I just, I want to say that it's good to be back with you all again. I was a little disappointed that we're on Zoom only because I was looking forward to sharing the space again with you tonight. And just want to take a moment to thank you all for your ongoing service to the community as, as a person who experienced what that commitment is like. It causes me to appreciate those who are serving on council and continue to serve the community even more. Want to just say a thank you to council and staff for your attention to urban forestry issues and opportunities. And I recognize that there is a lot on the agenda tonight, and I really appreciate everyone allocating their time and energy for these matters. Just want to take a second to highlight the email that I sent a few weeks ago with information on the costs and benefits of urban forestry and and impress upon you the tremendous return on investment that comes from planting and maintaining trees. And while the value of trees in our community has been known to a greater or lesser extent for some time, recent research shows that the benefits are orders of magnitude greater than the costs. And I hope that you will check out those links, particularly the podcast with Dr. Jeffrey Donovan, PhD. And I hope that as you look at some of the expenses being incurred or needed to be funded by the city in order to grow our urban canopy, that you will consider those costs in this context and know that the benefits to the community will far exceed those costs. Regarding the, just the OWEB Upland Tree Recovery Grant generally, you know, we have a limited time to make the most of this opportunity. Grant expires in June, and the sooner we plant, the better. We presently have more trees available than we have spaces currently arranged to plant them. And two of the committee's recommendations before you tonight pertain to the committee's desire to find spaces to plant. Leaving trees on the table is leaving the potential value that those trees could provide to our community on the table. And we want to see talent get as close to the remainder of those 1,088 trees that are funded, planted this fall, winter, and spring. And the committee is ready to support that process in any way we can. Just want to say a quick note about irrigation and, and that, and highlight that, you know, any landscape grade tree planted in Southern Oregon needs at least three years of irrigation to get established, even drought-resistant species. But that that's a cost that's, that's necessary if you want a tree that's healthy and vigorous in years four and five and beyond, and, and that the cost of water to get a tree established is not a lot of expense, and I believe it's a good and appropriate use of water that benefits our community. I have more to say later in the meeting, and so I will thank you in advance for your time and attention. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the next agenda item, which is five, 5.1 is the city manager's report, and then 5.2, you can just go ahead and move into the Urban Renewal Activities Report, Gary.
Sure, thank you very much. First, oh, I just lost my lights. First, I'd like to introduce again in this meeting Karen Mokley, who has joined the city staff as an executive assistant in my office. Karen comes to us from serving in similar support positions in the healthcare field, both in California and more recently here with Asante. And she is getting to know the city's processes and filing system and inner workings of City Hall, and I think it's going to be a great asset to providing some really needed support here in the, in the City Hall, not only in my office, but for others as well. So looking up and yep, Karen is still in the meeting tonight. She's checking it out. And one of the roles she's going to play in the future is to assist Hector at city council meetings and be the backup person for that function. So she's going to be kind of a roving player on the team focused mainly on supporting manager's office. So welcome to you, Karen. I know you spoke once before, but say hello again.
Thanks, Gary. I appreciate it. Just wanted to let everyone know how thankful I am to be on this, the City of Talent team. And I am really looking forward to meeting all of you and working with you in the future.
Okay, thank you. Other notices that we have this evening is the, the offices will be closed on November 28th and 29th in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. The, are several vacancies on city committees and commissions. For a complete list of vacancies and how you can serve the community in that role, visit the city's website at cityoftalent.org. Finally, today was the day deadline for submission of proposals to undertake the rehabilitation of the skate park project. A grant-funded project, and we received three proposals. We're going to be evaluating those in the coming days, and our plan is to have a recommendation for award of a contract on the meeting of December 4th. That's all I have tonight on city urban renewal. I made a report on the Gateway Project earlier that we are progressing with meeting with residents there conveying ownership of trailers so far to about a dozen of the residents. At least one trailer has now left the park. We had eight more appraisals scheduled this week. And I think we have a total of 23 applicants for, to acquire the trailer in which they're living. And I understand there are more to come. So access, access and their caseworkers are the leads on contacting the residents, and then the city staff does a follow-up visit with the, the resident and their caseworker, and we put a packet together and everything, everything works. We sign the trailer over to them. So that so far has gone well, but a few questions that have come up that we were able to get resolved and, but altogether, that's going quite well.
Great, thank you, Gary. Next item on the agenda is item six, which is the consent calendar. Is there anything that the council wishes to take off the consent calendar for discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion if there's no questions. Not seeing any questions, so I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Perry Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a second? Yeah, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say, well, let's see, no, please raise your hand. Function. All right, looks like it's unanimous. Any opposed? All right, very good. Next item on the agenda is item 7.1, which is the adoption of the storm water master plan. Staff report.
Mayor and members of the council, I'm actually going to turn the bulk of this report over to the Public Works Director, City Engineer, Gao Ying Bagoa. This is a, an item that has now been moved forward since a meeting in early 2023 in which a new storm water master plan was developed. And that included a number of recommendations. I believe Nick Becky, I think it is, is here from Rogue Valley Sewer Services to help us with this matter. As he was, he and his staff were involved in the development of the plan. So I'll, at this point, defer to Gao Ying for the rest of the staff report, and I'll be back for the next item.
Thank you, Gary. Oh, can you guys hear me? Hello?
We hear you.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Gary, and good evening, everybody. So this is Storm Water Master Plan has been in the pipeline for a while, and I know Nick from RVSS had worked really hard on this. And our previous city manager had discussed with you guys last year, I believe. And this storm water master plan need to be updated every five to 10 years. And our latest one was from 1999, so it's way overdue. So I'm glad to see this one back into this agenda. Basically, you have all the documents in the agenda packet. So the staff recommendation is a motion to direct the city manager to return to the city council with ordinances and resolutions to, number one, update the system development charge calculation methodology, changing the SDC to $2,584 per dwelling unit. And to update the section 13.60 of the Talent Municipal Code to reflect the date of the latest CD and the RVSS IGA. Number two, adopt the April 11th, 2023 Storm Water Master Plan. And number three would be adopt the stormwater utility fee at $7.10 per dwelling unit per month effective January 1st and 2025. And any questions, I'm happy to answer, or Nick can help with that too, since he's the architect of this master, storm master plan.
Councilor Panamarev.
Thanks so much. Yes, so I'm wondering mostly, I have a vague memory of this master plan in the study session. I think there's a lot of great stuff in it. I think I'm, I'm fine with the SDC increase, but that's almost a three times increase on the monthly rate for RVSS ratepayers. And I have a question. One of the things I, I think I remember that, that rates have gone up substantially lately to the ratepayers, and this would be yet another increase. So I just wanted to check in. And I apologize, my memory isn't that great. As far as what has been the recent rate history to RVS ratepayers? And as far as the justification for this almost three times increase, if somebody wants to speak to that.
Lucky for me, I believe our general manager Carl just got on the line, but I don't see him. Did he just?
Yeah, he's there. He's there with his hand up.
Oh, there he is. Okay, good, because he, he's right by me. Okay, he, he just, he handles the financial portion of this master plan as well as everything in operations at RVS. So take it away, Carl.
Yeah, I can, I can, are you asking about the overall, like the rate, the sewer rate that we charge?
Yeah, yeah, and, and Carl, I guess I'm really just, you know, kind of interested in the impact on our ratepayers. I'm, I'm feeling that, and I just also, I'm just kind of wondering if this is something that could be phased in a little bit. Anyway, yeah.
Well, that's jumping ahead a little bit, but so that, that rate, the way that was calculated is we identified what the maintenance needs would be for the city to incur, to, to maintain the system as it is. And then divided that by the number of connections that we have that are paying for that, and that came to an increase of, if I remember right, about $2 or $3. And then the other part of that was to pay for the portion of the capital improvements that we would expect to be paid by the current users as opposed to by SDCs. And that was another $2.60. So we add those together and it up with, I think the rate was $7.10. A dollar of that would be for stormwater quality that RVSS would keep, and the remainder would be forwarded to the city. So it, it is a significant increase, and in the report, we did show a comparison to other cities. Of course, this was back, this was a couple of years ago. But I think that would still put the fees that talent would pay for stormwater lower than what Medford residents pay, and if I can find that table, there is a table in the, towards the back. Yeah, it's, it's a little bit higher than what Ashland and Central Point would, are paying, and a little bit lower than what for, to, on, are with what, what other people in, in the valley are paying for their stormwater utility. So if, if I can, can I kind of go through the, the whole process of the, how we developed the master plan, and I, I would want, you know, since I know councils change, you know, and you know, we're kind of an invisible utility, and we like it that way. If you're thinking about us, that means something's going wrong. But I do want to just make sure everyone understands the relationship between Rogue Valley Sewer and Talent. Take a couple of minutes on that, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, so we are, we're, we're a special district, so we're, we're a unit of government, a sanitary authority, so that's what our specialty is. We've been managing the sewer systems in talent since about 1970. You know, we've always, you know, this is even before the interceptor was built. Back in 2004, EPA came down with the new Phase Two NPDS rule, which required certain-sized cities to implement stormwater quality program. And when that came down, it impacted Talent, Phoenix, Jacksonville, Medford, Central Point, and everyone except for Medford, we entered into an intergovernmental agreement where Rogue Valley Sewer would be handling all the permit requirements for stormwater quality on behalf of, of those cities. So we've had that in place with talent. We've been managing the stormwater quality side of it since 2004. The actual conveyance part of it, you know, maintaining the pipes, maintaining the catch basins, that's always been part of the city's jurisdiction. That's, that's always been part of their job. So when was this? About 2019, 2018, the city asked if we could do a stormwater master plan for them. And at the time, we had staff available and, and everything looked good. Sure, we'll do it. And so we, we took that task on. We had a pandemic, we had a fire, so some of our priorities changed for a while, so it took a little bit longer to, to get the final report to you. But that's what we have in front of you now. And what we did for the report, I mean, there's a couple of different steps in it. We actually went out and surveyed the entire system. We actually went out and surveyed the entire system and created GIS maps of the entire storm drain system. We, we cleaned a portion of it, and we TV inspected a portion of it to get an assessment of what the condition of the pipe was. And then Nick and his team built a system model. They, they modeled flows throughout the whole system and, you know, tested it under different types of storm scenarios, and were able to identify areas that needed to be upsized or changed or improved. And that's where the capital improvement plan came from. So, so that's kind of the heart and soul of the, of the stormwater master plan. And then on the back end of that, we did a financial evaluation. That's where we took, you know, the estimated cost for the capital improvements, how much of that we would expect to be paid through SDCs, how much through rates, and that gave us a portion of our rate that we would recommend, and then what the maintenance costs would be for talent, just to maintain the system, to do the cleaning and flushing and periodic maintenance that's needed. And so that's where the rate, the, the monthly rate was built in. The relationship we have with Talent is we do the, the billing for stormwater, and we, that's attached to everyone's sewer bill, and then the portion that goes back to the town, we just turn that back over to you. So right now, residents in Talent pay $2.50. A dollar of that goes to the water quality program. The rest of it, the $1.50 gets kicked back over to the city. So, yeah, we do a transfer every month for, for that amount. So if we make, if, if you do make the change in the rates, I imagine it would work the same way. It would just be a higher amount that we're collecting within the city of Talent and returning that to the city. Yeah, and like I said, Nick, Nick did the bulk of the work. And so if there's like highly technical questions, you know, he's probably better suited to answer those. You know, I know one of the requests that the city had was to evaluate how climate change might impact it. And we, we actually used a software program that was developed by EPA that analyzed various effects of climate change, and, and what that revealed was that we could expect about a seven and a half percent increase in intensity of storms, and that had a negligible effect on what our capital program would be. So, you know, the system, you know, the improvements that we've identified, and a system that doesn't need improved can handle that extra seven and a half percent in intensity without any, any concerns on that. What else did I want to, oh, a couple, there's, there's some other things in there, in the appendix. I, I don't think that was part of adopting a master plan, but Nick did a recommended rewrite of your design standards for storm drains. And that, that's a pretty thorough rehash of that, is something, you know, that's not part of it, that's not necessarily part of the master plan itself, but something to consider. And then if you do agree to change the SDCs, it's not, it's more than a matter of just, we want to increase the SDCs. You have, there is a process, and it's spelled out in there, public notice, you have to adopt the methodology. And in the appendix, we have recommended language of a change to your, your ordinance on SDCs that would adopt the new methodology, and that would justify the, the new rate. So I think that's all I have.
Mayor, I see Gao Ying's hand, hand is up. Sorry about that. I was, I was just trying to get back in, so I dropped off.
Oh, hi. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Carl and Nick both, and for joining, take their time. And to answer your question, Counselor Panamarev, sorry for pronouncing your name probably wrong. But anyway, the, the compare, so Nick did the, Nick and the crowd, they did the awesome job on this storm must, master plan in very details, uses a methodology to, you know, calculate all the flow. This is something that the people don't think, because it's underground, it's until the problem arrives. So we have to, like, to forecast and prepare for the worst, in case there's a flooding or as the city grow, also we increase the impervious area. I know people don't like to see all those SDC fees goes up. But if we don't collect them, we wouldn't have the money to carry out all the projects. And until the system fails, then there's a more catastrophic, you know, repair and the money being invested at that point. So anyway, to answer your question, Erin, no, sorry, I'd rather say the first name. And it's on page 99 on the store master plan, your comparison of all different cities charging, how much they charge? And so, yeah, Medford is charging currently $7.85 per month for the storm utility rate. And ours right now proposes $7.10 per month. And the SDC fees are a little bit different, but as my understanding so far, since I take this position, that our storm system has not been updated for a long, long time. So that's why there's more capital requirements for doing this, and that's all calculated in details by Nick through this plan. Hope that answers your question.
Nick?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, kind of address a little bit of what Gao Ying was saying about the, the maintenance fee as well, kind of tying it to the capital plan. I don't expect everybody to read all the text through this, but one of the big takeaways from it, when we were doing all the fieldwork and the analysis, was some of the, as well as talking to, you know, residents and city staff, we went out and looked at some areas that were problem areas that were identified, you know, with, with staff as well as residents. And what we saw was a lot of deferred maintenance, and some of that, you know, was probably from limited staff, limited budgeting, budgeting, certain things like that. So those are real quick, easy fixes. I mean, you, you see some big numbers in there, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, half a million dollars, over a million dollars. A lot of that stuff, especially over on First Street, some of the stuff on gangness, some of those areas could really be at least perpetuated along in the short term with some robust maintenance activities. So if you, if you have a little bit bigger fee, you're going to be able to, you know, absorb that a little better. It's just something to think about as well. You don't have to spend those big bucks right away.
Any other questions of staff? Counselor Panamarev?
Yes, so just to follow up, so right now, it's either we're paying for the maintenance we are doing out of some other funds, since this isn't sufficient, or we're just not doing the maintenance, it sounds like, and I'm, and I'm, I'm not sure. So I, I guess that's kind of my question, which is it, or is it a combination of both? And, and then also, I'm also wondering if this would be treated like an enterprise fund in that the money that's, that comes into the city budget from this fee would need to go towards stormwater maintenance, or would it just be, go to general fund? Or a street fund? That might be a question for Tessa, or Gao Ying.
If I may, I can answer the part regarding to maintenance, Counselor Panamarev. And so the, as I took the post, and so my understanding, because of shortage of staff, we are struggling actually to do all the day-to-day, you know, tasks at the public works. You know, as you all know, that we are in charge of street storm water. And since I took the position, we have a lot of work on the water line repair, service line burst open. And as, you know, then you have to cut the street and to do all that. So basically, yes, we are lack of the maintenance for years, as my understanding. And then for the funding, yeah, Tessa probably the best to answer. Utility fund probably go for the maintenance, I'm not sure. Tessa, if you're in, help me out.
Yes, just one moment, my computer going. There we go. Sorry about that. Yes, all fees from the, the storm water, the storm drain utility fee does go into the street fund. It does not go into the general fund at all. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, so it goes into the street fund, but it doesn't, does that mean it, it is earmarked for stormwater? Or could it just be used for anything that the street fund could use it for?
Actually, in this case, it would be co-mingled. But we can address that, where it can go to, that fee can actually maybe be a transfer into capital projects fund. What we collect on behalf of that goes directly into the capital projects fund. We could do it that way.
Okay, so I, I guess there's no, like, legal requirement to make sure that it's used directly for stormwater maintenance and capital projects, but that's something that staff could do to, you know, make sure that money gets guided into the right purposes.
I do not, I, I do not know the answer to the legal requirements. I could investigate that. However, staff can ensure, we can set up a process to ensure that that is directed to the stormwater related projects.
Sorry, Mayor, I just have one more question.
Sorry, I was muted. Got to get back in the habit of operating.
Dave's gonna call me up, filibuster. I'm just wondering, is there, is, would it be possible to, like, phase it in, in two, two increments, rather than the full hit in the first bell?
Well, I guess I can chime in on that. Certainly, you could do that, and then push the next increase down the road further. This is a, a fee that needs to be updated regularly to keep up with the cost of doing business. So, yep, you can get ahead of it or stay behind. And as to the cost of segregating stormwater project with street projects, street projects are stormwater projects. When you touch a street, when you overlay a street to increase the intensity of the runoff, or you dig into a street, you're, you're changing this. You know, most of the streets in Talent are the stormwater system. And we've got pipes that convey it further on, but that water that's running along the curb of the street is looking for that stormwater inlet. But while it's looking for the stormwater inlet, it's actually running in the stormwater system, which is the street. So it, it, you know, there's, it's a, it's a distinct gray line.
Counselor Byers?
Yeah, I'm curious, as we're looking at growth for talent and increasing in rates and various fees, I'm wondering if there are any instances where RVSS support cities in offering any sort of, like, offsetting by prioritizing permeable surface where possible when developing a, a new piece of land or redeveloping a piece of land.
I would invite Rogue Valley Sewer Services to, your hand is raised. Go ahead and.
Yeah, I was going to answer Counselor Panamarev's question first about this, the phasing. And just to point out that about half of the increase that's proposed is intended to be dedicated to capital improvements. And so if you delayed that increase, you're in effect delaying the implementation of those capital improvements, which, you know, the plan calls for them being put in over the next 20 years. So it's, there's a lot of room to work with there. And then the question from Counselor Byers, I'm not sure if I quite understood what she was asking there. Could you repeat that?
Sure. I'm wondering if there is any, any community that you work with that has some sort of compensation or incentivizing of maximizing the permeable surface of a developed lot, thereby reducing the overall impact on storm.
Okay, yes, there is, you know, in the, in our stormwater design manual, there is some incentives available. Basically, it results in a reduced monthly fee for, for a developer that does that, but this, for new development, and they're in the process of, of writing another permit, but the current standards really do minimize the amount of increased runoff coming off of new developments. You know, there's a lot of, of ways that, you know, they can declare that, you know, it's not practical and not feasible, whatever it is. But overall, the, the goal of the stormwater design manual is that the impact on new development, you know, downstream is, is very minimal. So that's, I guess that's not really incentive, it's more of a requirement. You know, the incentives that we have are, you know, apply when someone goes beyond what their requirements are. And we do have money set aside for that, where if somebody, you know, you know, they're required to do this much mitigation for their stormwater, and they do more than that, we do have money set aside that we can help offset cost for that. It's, we don't get many takers on that. It, it's, in fact, very, very few people, you know, even they know about it, they just, it's not worth it to them to, to do that extra mitigation. But, you know, it's there for them if they, if they, if they want it.
Okay, I'm gonna take these next couple of questions, and I'm going to try to move this item along, because we have a long agenda in front of us. So Nick, if you want to go ahead, and I'm going to take Nick, and then I'm going to take Anna, and then I'll be seeking some direction from council.
Mayor, mine is just a tiny follow-up to the answer that I just received.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just wondering if there's any similar sort of incentivizing for retroactively doing that as well.
I had not considered that, so that, that, that question's never come up. I don't, we haven't really looked at anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Nick?
Yeah, I would, I couldn't help but take the chance to put in a plug for a capital project that we just did within the city. Sorry, I like to slow off. We, we, most of you probably seen the construction work going on down in the old Cummins parking lot adjacent to the creek. So that facility was installed, it was kind of a, it's kind of a, on a whim, we approached the developer years ago in 2017, and to, because it just lent itself really well for a regional stormwater facility. So nothing happened. They came back, actually after the fire came through, and, you know, we've now finally, after a lot of work, got that facility put in place. But it kind of speaks to, I think, what Counselor Byers, maybe a little bit, it's, it's kind of diluted, but that project actually takes care of all the stormwater requirements for that entire drainage basin. So it, it is a bit of a benefit. Like I said, it's a bit diluted, and any of those housing projects or any, any impervious surface that's put in that drainage basin does not have to have onsite stormwater management. So it's all taken care of, which, including tons of legacy areas that were all, impervious areas that were all put in well before this permit was in place. So it's just a plug for that. We may come and talk to you guys later, if you guys have any properties in the future. You know, we're, we're always looking for more spots to do that, so.
Great, thank you. All right, everybody, if we can start to, to move towards some direction, that would be great. I, the city manager is going to leave after the next item, so I do want to get through the next item, and, and so that we can proceed with the rest of the, of the agenda. So are there any other questions that we want to ask of staff before we entertain a motion? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Is there a motion on this one, Gary? Is there a motion on this one, Gary?
There is a motion.
I'm trying to find it. Oh, wait a minute, here we go. Oh wait, so it's past the.
Is it the, the master plan recommendations? Are those essentially the motions on page 26?
Yeah, I think that's probably it because I just went through the.
It's page 23.
Yeah, so that was 23 and each one of these recommendations are different, so I don't want to I don't want to entertain them all at once. So I'll take three, three motions. Let's start with the first recommendation. I'll entertain a motion on the first recommendation, please. Counselor Ponamorov?
Sure, I moved to update the system development charge calculation methodology, changing the SDC to 2,584 per dwelling unit and to update section 13.60 of the talent municipal code to reflect the date of the latest city slash RVSS IGA.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to update systems development charge calculation methodology, changing SDC from to 2,584 per dwelling unit and to update section 13.60 of the talent municipal code to reflect the date of the latest city RVSS IGA. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor?
Oh, sorry. Yeah?
Yes, just the first part of that recommendation is that we will return to the council with the necessary ordinances and resolutions to accomplish recommendation one.
Great. So I don't think we need to change the, yeah, we don't need to change the motion for that.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So it's like, I think that what we should do is frame each of these with the language that we're moving to direct staff to return with an ordinance or a resolution and then list each of these. Because we're not actually voting on doing the thing, we're just voting on directing staff.
Yeah.
Yep, at the pleasure of the council, go ahead.
I can restate the motion. I apologize, I just read right over that. Mayor, would you like me to withdraw and, and restate the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is the second okay with that? So, move to direct the city manager to return to the city council with ordinances and resolutions to update the system development charge calculation methodology, changing the SDC to 2,584 per dwelling unit and to update section 13.60 of the talent municipal code to reflect the date of the latest city slash RVSS IGA.
Now, we have a motion and a second is stated into the record by Counselor Eleanor Ponamorov. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Yeah, I just, for the visual record, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Adopted. I don't think we need a motion for number two. Do we?
You will ultimately.
Right. When you bring back the.
You can bring that back at the same time as number one.
Yeah. And then so we'll take a motion for item number three. Counselor Colley?
I move to direct the city manager to return to the city council with ordinances and resolutions to adopt the stormwater utility fee at $7.10 per dwelling unit per month effective January 1st, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to direct city manager to return the city, to the city council with ordinance, ordinances and resolutions to adopt the storm water utility fee at $7.10 per dwelling unit per month effective January 1st, 2025. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Ponamorov?
Yeah, I'd just like to offer like the possibility of phasing. Phasing in maybe $3 for the first jump and then have the second jump actually also reflect kind of cost of living increase, you know, maybe it would be like another $3 or whatever would be needed to make sure that we're caught up, but basically break it up into two, just phase it a little bit.
Are you offering an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, I can do that if there's interest. I'll just, I'll just make it a, a motion. I move to amend the, the motion to allow a phased approach.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the motion to allow a phased approach. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Hand, raise your hand. If you're just, yeah, there you go. One, two, three. Four, five, six, okay. And any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. So to the, to the original motion, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye by raising your hand. Okay, and let the record show that everybody's hand is raised. And any opposed? The motion is carried unanimously, all right? Thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on now to the next item on the agenda. Gary, because you are leaving after this one, I just want to make kind of a follow-up note on the item that we just discussed. And it might be part, it might be just taking a note for goals, I'm not sure, and you won't be here for others, so it's, it's sort of a reoccurring theme in, in our management of the city that we have regular kind of intervals of updates that should have happened in a period of time and we have no means of tracking that as, as elected officials. So what I would hope for for sometime in early 2025, in the first, I hope, half of the year at least, that we would get a, a published schedule of plans and fees that need to be updated on a regular basis, especially those that are suggested by ORS as, as getting periodic updates. And that that would be on some kind of spreadsheet that we can access so that we can see where we're at all the time. I, I just see that as a, a tool that can be provided to the elected official so that we can sort of track that we are keeping up with the maintenance, keeping up with updates on plans, keeping up with fee schedules. And I know you guys are working on fee schedule stuff, but I just, I really, I feel like we need to have access to a living document so that we're able to track this stuff, because it's just, I think, getting too difficult to consistently hear that there's deferred maintenance programs and that there's deferred fees programs and stuff like that, that we we just don't have any access to that information. So I'll leave it to you to decide how to put that in the pipeline or where to put it in the pipeline, but gosh, if there's no objection, I, I think that's a tool that this council could definitely, and future councils could definitely use.
Appreciate that. We've, we've added to the resources to build that pipeline.
Yeah, to, to develop the pipeline, but the informational piece, I just want to make sure that
Yes.
that there is a, there's a public facing or at least council facing scheduler that we can all follow.
Yeah, it really needs to be a public facing tracking of fees and there are a number of things that we need to be tracking better. Lease agreements, intergovernmental agreements, and that's all coming. Now that we have some additional resources to put those administrative systems in place.
Great. I'm particularly sensitive about those things that have financial impact to the residents. So I, I would imagine you are already prioritizing those. All right, thank you, Gary, I appreciate that. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and move us to the next item. It is item 7.2, the Urban Forestry Committee Recommendations for Gateway Tree Relocations and Organ Watershed Enhancement Board Upland Canopy Grant Amendments. We have a representative from the committee, committee member Clark. If there's no objection, I'd like to bring committee member Clark onto the dais for this discussion, so if we can elevate him. He has expressed interest speaking on this item. But we have recently found value in exercising our right by charter to bring members of committees and commissions onto the dais for these discussions, and so if there's no objection, I think we'll benefit from it again tonight. All right, so committee member Clark, what that means to you is that you are invited to join the discussion as a member on the dais. But I'm, what I'm gonna go ahead and start us off with staff report.
Okay, Mayor and council members, you were first introduced to this topic at the last city council meeting where it was reported that the Urban Forestry Committee had made a number of recommendations with respect to the continuation of the OWEB planting program, relocation of trees from the gateway site and moving those to other locations on city property, expanding certain aspects of the OWEB program and moving forward with planting trees under the OWEB program along Highway 1, Highway 99 and also specifically within the center median on Highway 99. The city staff made some preliminary comments on those recommendations and the council agreed to bring it back at this meeting for some additional staff analysis and a report to you. We've prepared that report, it's in your packet. We've made some specific recommendations. One is to, if the, if the a council's interested in moving forward on Urban Forestry Committee Recommendations 4 and 5, that you direct the staff to obtain a cost estimate for engineering and a traffic safety study services to modify the center medians on Highway 99 consistent, consistent with the plan proposed by the Urban Forestry Committee and report back to the council. I know that committee member Clark has submitted a further modification of that recommendation. And we look forward to hearing that and working that issue out with everyone concerned. The second motion that we propose would be to direct the staff to pursue agreements with Jackson County and ODOT to plant additional OWEB funded trees along a 1,350-foot strip south of Newbury Park and coordinate with FEMA project manager of the FEMA funded project for hazard mitigation. It's also taking place in that same general area. I had a conversation with them today and they, they don't really, they don't really see a conflict there. But we do need to talk with the property owners who are in Jackson County and ODOT in order to get their consent to that, that activity. And then finally, motion three was to direct staff to pursue the necessary amendments to the OWEB agreement to expand the project scope to accommodate Recommendations 4 and 5. And along with that, we will need to contact the Medford Water Commission as some of that activity will, that is proposed would include outside of the city limits and our current agreement with the Medford Water Commission prohibits us from providing service outside the city limits. So there's some things we need to do there to be able to accomplish some of these recommendations. Most of the recommendations, the implementation is already in progress. And I think that's reflected in committee member Clark's subsequent memorandum that he sent today or yesterday that I, I understand he'll speak on tonight. So I, you know, I don't think that there is a different track going on here between the, the city management and the Urban Forestry Committee. You know, I had requested recommendations from the Forestry Committee on where to relocate the gateway trees. And we received some good recommendations and some that don't quite work. But I think we can accommodate everyone's you know, positive interest in saving those trees and finding them an appropriate new home. Might mention that we also conferred with the property management at the gateway about relocation of the trees and how they may be impairing relocation of the trailers. They've indicated to us that they believe they can move the trailers without impacting the trees. So there's no real urgency in doing that, although it would certainly be easier for them if the trees were not there, but it's not essential that the trees be relocated to get the trailers out. So that's all the new information I have. And happy to hear from committee member Clark.
So how I'd like to proceed is to go ahead and take your prepared test, the prepared agenda item that you had a speaker request form on just for our information. Just give you the regular allotted time for that and then you can join us in the discussion. So Counselor Clark, or wow, committee member Clark?
So am I, are you intending that I would speak to all of the recommendations or, or or?
Well, you, you filled out a speaker request form
Yes.
for this agenda item. So I would, I would invite you to go ahead and, and speak to that. And then we, you can engage in the discussion with us as we proceed.
Okay, great. Well, I mean, I think the, the, the general comments are appreciation and gratitude for the the positive movement, the responsiveness to the committee's recommendations. And I have some, you know, some, some more detailed comments about each of the recommendations, but really feeling positive about some real forward progress that we're seeing towards growing our urban canopy.
Okay, is that, is that the extent of your prepared, prepared comments?
Well, I do have, I have, I have more, I'm more prepared, but they're particular to the, to each of the motions. And I can, I can go ahead and proceed through that if that's, if that's okay.
Is that, will that be helpful to the council? Okay, go ahead.
Sure, thank you, thank you. Yeah, just, and I'll, I'll try to be brief here, but you know, regarding the first recommendation about protecting the trees along the perimeter gateway, really appreciate the attention to this. Happy to hear that there's not any construction working currently planned around the perimeter of the site. And that, you know, construction fencing is really essential to define those protected areas. It's very common to see construction sites with heavy equipment in the critical root zone of mature trees that has really lasting impact. We want to see these community resources protected and, and and just encourage folks to recognize as you go down that part of Valley View and that first stretch of, of Highway 99 to recognize the what those trees were already contributing to the community. Regarding the, the relocation of the trees from the interior, just want to quickly follow up on Gary's comment. I think part of that concern about getting the trees out in advance was because when they brought the trees in, I mean, when they brought the trailers in, there was damage to the landscaping as the, as they were trying to back the trailers into place. And I believe our landscape contractor actually assisted with the placing of some of those trailers in order to try to protect the landscaping. So that's part of what fuels that concern about doing one for the other. But I just want to say how excited I am about this project and what it demonstrates about our community. It's going to be a tremendous benefit to our downtown area. You know, we cared enough about the fire survivors that we planted a tree next to each trailer so that they're temporary homes and temporary neighborhood would feel like a community and be more enjoyable. We also care enough to relocate those trees to public property in our downtown for the benefit of our community. And so I see this as a real demonstration of Talents' urban forestry values. You know, when the committee learned that we needed about six more planting locations, we discussed the senior living center on Suncrest and how they have a building and a parking lot that's fully exposed to the hot southwestern sun and how they had insufficient trees planted there. And I emailed Gary after that meeting, and it was about noon the next day that I received an email that the owners had been contacted. They had accepted the offer of, of new trees and the arrangements were being made. And I'm really, really excited, and the committee members are really excited about what that's going to mean for the community broadly, but specifically for the residents there. That's going to make a difference in that space. As you see, the plan does call for some removal and replacement of trees on our downtown campus area. These are trees that are in decline and/or species that were not great long-term choices, and replacing them with species that are good long-term choices. There's no reason why many of the trees that are going to get planted shouldn't still be growing here on our downtown campus 100 years from now. Super exciting stuff. Greatly appreciate that this is getting done. Timing is going to be perfect. When the trees leaf out next spring, you're really going to see the impact of that. Just want to touch on the motion, the third recommendation regarding outreach on 99. You know, I just want to give a recognition and appreciation for all the outreach that has occurred. I knew about some of it, wasn't aware of all of it. And, you know, just on, on the plus side, want to highlight how the trees that already have been planted and those that are scheduled are making a significant difference. But that these, as we said before, these are key areas, Valley View and Highway 99, because there's so much concrete. And every participating property owner is making a significant impact on the community in many ways, urban heat island effect just being one. And so I hope that we're thoroughly investigating all opportunities. And if there's any possibility of getting other properties on board, that would be awesome. And I think the motivation is just behind the recommendation from the committee is just knowing that all, all property owners have been contacted and given the opportunity. And I, I suggested a potential motion to that effect. If y'all wish that, to take that up, but that is the, I think that was the sentiment behind the committee's recommendation there. If you'll just bear with me, I got, just regarding the fourth recommendation as far as planting the medians. I'll start by saying that I did inform the members of my committee about my comments on this matter and my intention to make a new motion at our next meeting, but speaking for myself personally, I'm open to letting go of the idea of widening the planting wells. You know, that was born of a vision to grow the largest trees, trees that we possibly could in the middle of our biggest street. But I would rather move, it seems like it might be time to think about moving forward with medians as they are, planting the medians as they are with trees that can do well with that limited soil volume. It may not be quite as big as a canopy in the long term, but we, there are species that can do well. And I offered a a potential motion about, about moving forward with plans to prepare that should you decide to take that up. And then lastly, the, the third recommendation about adding planting area south of Lynn Newbury Park along the Greenway. As I said in my email to you yesterday, the, the tree recovery grant is the place, i- is the resource for this. And you know, we, we, again, we have more, we have more trees than we have spaces, and this is a great place. We're just really going to have a broad community benefit. I think there must be a way to work this out with the Medford Water Commission. They sell water to to the public and, you know, the cost of, of watering these trees sufficient to get them established is not a lot of money, and I'm sure there's a solution there. And so staff's potential motion number three as written, covers the, the agreement with OWEB as far as being able to move forward in the medians and in this extension to the Lynn Newbury Park planting. And, and yes, I do hope to see and offered a potential motion in which staff would pursue agreements with Jackson County and ODOT to, to plant that area and to investigate solutions with the Medford Water Commission. And I thank you for your patience and your time.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. I really appreciate it. And I mean, Committee Member Clark, that's going to be a tough one when you're sitting with us. Yeah, and you know, thank you for your dedication. We appreciate you spending some time with us this evening, taking, taking an evening and joining us in this discussion. Counselor Panamrith?
Yeah, so this is a question for staff. So was the idea of the engineering and traffic safety study, all of that contingent upon the perceived need to widen the medians? And also, are you okay with not widening, widening the medians if the, if the trees are indeed smaller?
So the i- in order to modify the tree wells in any fashion, we will need to obtain essentially an encroachment permit and a right-of-way permit from ODOT agreeing to maintain the landscaping, the trees, and to plant them in accordance with specifications determined by ODOT. We can retain our own engineering staff to perhaps propose a solution there. ODOT is not going to putting ODOT resources into designing new tree wells is not anywhere close to their priority. So if we're going to undertake that project, we're probably going to have to do the engineering work ourselves to determine what improvements need to be made in the tree wells, how to jackhammer the concrete out, how that would be accomplished, come up with a a traffic plan as we're working in the median or whoever, whatever contractor we hire to do that work as well as the tree installation. So that's the nature of the work that would be needed to implement that portion of the project. It, it's not a situation where we send the city public works crew out, jackhammer out a, a larger tree well or dig a deeper tree well and put irrigation system out there without getting all of the permits and complying with all of the regulations for performing work and maintaining a facility on a state highway.
All right, and I'm going to take go ahead, Gary, I'm sorry.
There's just a lot to that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to take it, take everybody in the order that I see them. So I'll do the best I can for that. I'm going to start with Going, and then I will go to Counselor Colay.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to add Gary's point regarding to widening the tree wells. I am in contact with ODOT and seeking their recommendations. And I believe it's an extensive construction project that requires us to sign a new IGA with ODOT. And not to mention, there's no funding for that currently. And I was brought in as managing the OWEB grant in the midst of all this happening, right? In the middle of this grant. And from reading the grant, my understanding is that on the grant application, OWEB gave us this grant planting the trees as existing media, as whatever was damaging Highway 99 right now, we just added more trees, replacing those. And I believe it was total along South Pacific Highway, total chain need to be planted 200. And we're really close to that, so as far as we find home. And on the grant application also for 1,000 tree total, anywhere that has not found a home, we can always put in some other places. One specific location was in Public Works Yard at the 200 Suncrest Road, if that makes any sense.
Thank you, Going. Counselor Colay?
Yeah, thanks for this. Just a a question for you, Gary. If the trees are to go in on Highway 99 without any modifications, do you know of any permits that need to be acquired, or is that a much easier process?
Yeah, if it's on the right-of-way, we would need to secure permits from from ODOT. You know, same thing that we encountered when I was in Brookings dealing with Highway 101 and installing street trees or whatever it was that we wanted to install in the ODOT right-of-way, street trees, street lights, banners, signs, whatever, whatever it was, they required a permit. Sometimes they required engineering, engineering on street lamp poles to determine if they could survive 80 mile an hour gust of wind like they had today in Brookings. So that, yeah, it, it's a, it can be and hopefully will not be, an arduous process to get permitting through, through ODOT. It just takes time and it'll take some money because it's not their project, it's ours, where we need to accommodate their requirements.
Committee Member Clark?
Yes, thank you, Chair. My, my understanding or my memory of the current IGA that I believe was put in place when Highway 99 was redesigned maybe 10 years ago, I believe, my understanding was that the city was already responsible for management and maintenance of the medians. So, yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there. And so, so sort of my, my sort of revised assessment is that that it's probably better to go forward with a lower-cost, more approachable project of planting trees in the medians more or less as they are than delay further in hopes of a, you know, modifying the medians as recommended. It just may be a, a bridge too far, a hurdle too high. That said, there would still need to be site preparation work that, from what Gary is saying, may require some permits. The amount of work would be much less. It would be amount to grinding out the stumps of the crepe myrtles that were burned in the fire four years ago now and repairing the irrigation and, you know, amending the soil. This is, you know, work that could be done in one work session potentially at night. So not a, not, not a, a much smaller project than, than the concept of expanding the planting tree wells. And I just wanted to offer that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I want to respond to that and, and for just for a clarification and, and staff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but procedurally, what that would look like is we would not be moving forward on the recommendation that's before us, but that we would send it back then to forestry to get a recommendation from the full board. In other words, I don't see us negotiating for alternative terms on, on the recommendations that are being made on the dais. So if that, if that doesn't make sense to anybody, I'd certainly want to hear about it, but that's kind of what it looks like to me. I'm going to take Counselor Colay, and then I'll take Counselor Panamrith.
Yeah, I just want to say that I concur with Commissioner Clark's, Committee Member Clark's statements about the medians. You know, it seems a much more approachable project to get trees in there as quickly as possible, knowing that this grant funding is coming up in June. Just to speak to some of the other items on here while I'm going, I really appreciate Committee Member Clark's amendments, having more information now from the city staff on the, the progress of this in regards to planting trees on Highway 99. I just really want to emphasize again how important that is and that we really do not want to leave any stone unturned and any trees on the table there. Just to speak to the expansion in Lynn Newbury, a couple of things. I'm generally supportive of the expansion there. One thing I am curious about is that the existing Lynn Newbury Park isn't owned by the city anyways. It's owned by ODOT, to my knowledge. So I'm curious how that relates to the expansion and finishing of planting trees there. And then just to speak to the reason to do this expansion using this funding and these trees rather than waiting for the FEMA replanting projects of these trees are larger street trees that are very valuable. They cost multiple hundreds of dollars because they've been growing for years. So like Committee Member Clark mentioned earlier, they're already an asset, more of an asset than the plants that will be planted. With the FEMA money, those are more restoration stock plants. They're smaller. They'll do great. It's what they're for. But this would be a huge jumpstart in addition to the planting that's already gone at Lynn Newbury and the stuff that's already planned to be finished planting there this season. So I'm generally supportive of these motions and the changes that have been brought by Committee Member Clark.
Yeah, I, and I do want to say there is a procedural alternative that council, the council can amend the, the motion as well, a- as long as everybody's willing to, you know, do that without any further discussion from the Forestry Committee. So there, there are other options. Counselor Panamrith?
Well, you read my mind. That's what I was going to say for the first option, just to modify it, to make it more squishy. You know, like direct staff to obtain cost estimate for whatever studies or services are needed to, you know, for the medians, consistent with TUFC's amended plan and report back to the council. In other words, just, just say, yeah, please move forward on this. You know, with the, with the, the less ambitious plan for the medians.
Do you think we need a motion for that? Like, I don't think we need a motion for that. I think
Yeah, maybe not.
I don't, I don't think we need a motion for that, Gary, do we?
No.
Okay. And I think you're in progress on some of that, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, we just want to clarify it. If, if that's, if that's a direction, I mean, if that's, if that's what pleases the council, I just want to clarify the, clarify that for, for Gary. Or at least ask him if he feels clear on it. All right, and we're, is there any further discussion? Counselor Byers?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I'm, I'm so appreciative of all of this effort to restore our urban forestry canopy. I remember a presentation shared with council by Mike Oxendine a couple of years ago, and I was blown away by the impact that a good urban forest canopy has on a city in ways that I had anticipated, but so many ways I had never even thought of. I think what's coming up for me in all of this discussion, and I'm glad to hear that Jason, you're supportive of adjusting the concept of planting in the median. Jason, you're supportive of adjusting the concept of planting in the medians to work with what's available. While we're looking at this one object in my head, I'm holding the fact, the bigger context of the work that's before staff right now for so many other things, including the, the wild requirements for finalizing our peer grant funding, for getting the funding secured for the skate park renovation, for the necessary things that will have to happen in order to have the grant that was being submitted by the city for a property to serve the community as a potential food pantry, among other things. Restoration of Town Hall, we've got all of our CIP projects. We've got some massive things before us with really limited staff. And then we also have projects before us with funding that. And to the mayor's point, we have not always been keeping up with increasing fees at the right rate. And so I'm wondering if there are ways to scale some of this effort to work with the actual staff bandwidth and financial bandwidth that we have at the moment. And while simultaneously, I very much appreciate the point that like these trees are valuable. They have been growing for a while, that the, that the investment in watering them in the long term is not that much for a huge impact. I really am very appreciative of all of that. I guess I'm asking for perhaps some even more creative thinking about how to make this all happen or what that might look like.
Counselor Colay?
Yeah, I appreciate that statement and acknowledge as well the workload that the staff has. Along those lines, when it comes to the expansion in Newbury regarding the watering, which I think is part of the hang up here. I am not 100% sure, but I'm fairly sure that whatever restoration contractor plants, plants or does the planting in the area under the FEMA grant, they are probably going to have to install some type of irrigation. This area doesn't necessarily lend itself well to just planting restoration stock and letting it grow. So I'm curious if there's maybe some coordination that could happen with RV cog, who I'm assuming is also managing that portion of the grant to maybe think ahead of thinking about what type of systems might need to be put in place to care for the other restoration work that's going to go on alongside the potential for these trees to be put in.
Well, the project manager, the FEMA project is aware of the project and indicated that he would be, he didn't see a conflict between the two activities. And certainly will modify, probably modify whatever they're doing to accomplish this work if this is what the city wants to do. They have some concerns also about utilizing all of the funds that have been allocated for the project as defined. So we may end up not returning any money to OWEB, but returning money to FEMA.
Any further questions or comments? All right. So if there's nothing else, I will open this up for any council members to take action if they wish. Or alternatively, I mean, I think there's been some suggestions about due diligence from the staff. So, yeah, what pleases the council? Counselor Byers?
I'm so sorry. Can I just put one more thing out there that just occurred to me?
Yes.
Before all of that happens, is there a way to phase this work? That would be my question for the urban forestry committee.
Does Jason or Counselor Colay have any, have any response to that? Or even, even the city manager?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, as far as the phasing, you know, the planting season is fall through spring, ideally in the winter when the trees are dormant. Kind of the urgency with this is the grant is up in June and not eligible, eligible for any extension. So if there was another planting season, you could totally, you know, take some time and phase it in. But that's where the, the sense of urgency comes.
We're going to do, we're going to do everything we can to not leave money on the table or trees unplanted.
Is there any action? I would be entertaining any motions that want to be made? Counselor Colay?
Yeah, just to clarify first, that we are not going to make, at least I'm not going to make a motion regarding Highway 99 because we talked about feeling like we have given clarity to the city manager on that topic. And also we're not going to request that the urban forestry committee bring a new motion to us regarding the Highway 99 median issue.
It's up to you guys. Like, like, like those are, I, I'm, I'm providing you with procedural options, ways that you can proceed on that. But that's, that has to come out in the form of either no action or some sort of action.
Okay.
Yeah. But I do, I do think this is a good opportunity to just make sure that we're clear with Gary about, like, we don't need a motion to further discuss the median thing. There, there's just some due diligence that needs to be done. And Gary seems clear that, what that, what that is. And if everybody's comfortable with that, that's where I'd leave it. I mean, that's where you could leave it, is what I would say.
If, if we hit snags and pursuing it with the other parties, we'll come back.
And, and just for my own clarity, Gary, again, what will you be discussing with the other parties?
We'll be discussing with Jackson County and ODOT, the authority to expand the project area from Lynn Newbury Park. We'll be discussing with ODOT what it takes to obtain permits for doing the work in the center medians. And we'll be talking with OWEB about any funding issues related to any of that work. All of that is in progress.
Counselor Panamrith, did you have a question or comment?
Well, I did. Because, I mean, Gary, you brought these, you had these three motions for us to direct staff. And I, and I'm guessing that you're just looking for consensus that we're supportive of all three of these motions.
That would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah. And I, I just wanted to ask you, I think the only, the daylight I'm seeing is, I've just, Committee Member Clark was wanting to add some language about contacting Medford Water Commission to investigate options to provide some irrigation there. Is, is that okay if, if we? Okay. So, yeah, so I think maybe, Mayor, what we, I think what we typically do is just, at least you take consensus that we're supportive of.
Yeah, I'm not trying to discourage a motion. I'm just saying, what action do you want to take? I'm asking you guys that, right? So as I said, I open it up for a motion if that's what you guys want to do.
No, but I, I just wanted to say, I think that Gary said he's clear. I just, I just think it would be nice if, like,
A motion would be helpful.
Okay. Counselor Colay?
Yeah, I want to make a motion number two to direct staff to pursue agreements with Jackson County and ODOT to plant additional OWEB funded trees along the 1,350 foot strip south of Lynn Newbury Park and coordinate with FEMA project manager.
Is there a second?
Not good.
We have a motion and a second. And Committee Member, we're, we're, we have a motion on the table. So I'm going to take, take it from here. We'll do deliberation with the council. So we have a motion and a second to direct staff to pursue agreements with Jackson County and ODOT to plant additional OWEB funded trees along the 1,350 foot strip south of Lynn Newbury Park and coordinate with FEMA with the FEMA project manager. Is there any further discussion? Counsel, Counselor Colay, do you wish to speak to your motion?
No.
Counselor Panamrith?
Yeah, I, I'd like to offer an amendment. I was just going to add the language suggested by Councilmember Clark, just to have that clarity. So the amendment would be to just add and to contact the Medford Water Commission to investigate options for providing irrigation to OWEB funded trees just outside the talent city limits.
All right, second on that amendment.
We have an amendment to also contact the Medford Water Commission to investigate irrigation to the trees. I would imagine, was it, does that come with, I, I just want to ask, does that come with a cost analysis that you're asking for? Counselor Panamrith? Yeah, yeah. I mean, are you intending, because it was suggested earlier that there would be a cost associated. Are you asking for that to be discussed as well?
Well, I, whatever, whatever staff feels is necessary to go with it. I think I, I just, I asked Gary when I, I asked you if that would be okay. I, I thought I saw it, it would be okay just to add that on. So we just have, yeah, so we just have some clarity. Whatever goes with it, I leave that up just.
Right. Any, is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Let, let the record show that, that the hands are all raised. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. All right. Is there any further motions? Counselor Colay?
Sorry, that was the amendment.
Oh, excuse me. As to the original motion, thank you, Counselor Panamrith. As to the, the original motion, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or raise your hand. I'm sorry. I, I'm rusty on Zoom. I can, that's all I can say. Looks like everybody is saying yes. Anybody opposed? There are no opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Any further motions?
Yes, further motion.
Counselor Colay?
I move to direct staff to pursue necessary amendments to the OWEB agreement to expand the project scope to accommodate talent urban forestry recommendations four and five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to direct staff to pursue necessary amendments to the OWEB agreement to expand the project scope to accommodate to, to the urban forestry's recommendations form five. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Okay, I have all six hands up. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. I, I, are there any further motions on this? Yeah. And Gary, I just want to ask one more question. I probably should have asked it on the front side. Are you able to, with the staff capacity issues that we have? And are you able to accomplish this and still prioritize the work that we need to do to get the grant application deadlines met?
I, I think we can, I think we can gather the information as to whether we have the capacity to undertake the work. I'm not sure.
I, I would hope that when you bring the information to us, that we get a, a good prepared assessment about that. Because, you know, I think we all have a major concern about the load that the, the CGDBG grant for the gateway has suddenly put on the city with a very short deadline and, and not wanting to put that $4.6 million grant on any kind of risk. And so I, I personally would really want to hear about staff capacity in, in your assessment, the information that you bring back to the council.
Well, there are several things going on there. Some of these will lead to legal agreements. Some will lead to perhaps a further discussion on the cost of providing water service. And what the extent of the work needs to be to comply with permit conditions and who will do that work. Whether, I doubt that we'll have internal resources available to do that. So we'll have to come back to you with some costs on who's going to do that work and how we're going to pay for it.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I don't want to diminish the importance of the tree canopy. We all, we all, I think, feel that way going into this discussion based on the last couple of years of discussions. But I, I, I'm, you know, I, I saw firsthand what the sudden demand that, that grant is making on our city. And I, you know, I, I, I want to put that out on the record so that as these discussions continue, we're, we're weighing our priorities. All right. Is there any further discussion on this item? Thank you, Committee Clark, for joining us in this discussion. It was really helpful. And please convey our gratitude to the entire team for the, for the great work you're doing. And gosh, moving forward, I hope we get these motions like one at a time. That would be really, really.
Absolutely. There was a bit of a backlog. I really appreciate the attention and taking up all of these items and addressing them each with, with a thorough and thoughtful analysis from staff. And just really appreciate it. It's very exciting to see these projects moving forward.
All right. Well, at least the information is moving forward at this point. Thank you also, Gary, for all the attention you put into this as well. So I'm going to go ahead and move us on to the next item, Gary. I'll be taking the staff report from Tessa.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, let me get back up to my page one here. Let it load. Next item on the agenda is 8.1 Adoption of Resolution 2024-104-R: Establishment of the Financial Management Policy. Staff?
Right. Great. Thank you very much. In your packet, starting on page 108, is a resolution number 202, 2024-104-R: Resolution of the City Council Adopting a Comprehensive Financial Management Policy. The City of Talent expects to receive community development block grant funds starting in the fiscal year 2024-25. Adoption of a comprehensive financial management policy is required to qualify for these grants. Currently, the city lacks such a policy. The objectives of the policy are to guide the council and management's financial decisions, minimize service costs and financial risks, ensure fair, balanced, and adequate revenue policies, maintain financial capacity for current and future needs, provide accurate, timely financial information, ensure the legal use of resources with effective internal controls, enhance transparency for citizens, council, commissions, committees, and staff. The policy shall be reviewed on an annual basis. Please note that this policy is not fully complete. We still need to establish an investment policy and possibly a few other items. For now, this is a really good start. Staff recommends adoption of resolution number 2024-104-R.
Any, any questions of staff? Counselor Panamrith?
Yeah, thanks. Tessa, did you have a, is there like a, a model that you used for this to start with?
Yes. This, this was originally was something that I wrote for the Medford Water Commission a number of years ago. It's been sitting on my back shelf for, since I stepped on board at the City of Talent and had to quickly dust it off and modify it to, you know, to fit the City of Talent's needs. There are, like I said, there are pieces that are missing, but this is, this is required in order to receive our CGDBG grant funding. And please know that this is something that, like I said, it's, you review this on an annual basis. If some of the requirements within the policy you may not prefer, let's say, for instance, you don't want to keep six months of operating expenses in the street fund. You really want to be a little more aggressive and say nine months. It's, it's up to the council's pleasure to have, you know, to set those standards. It's staff that's going to be providing you those recommendations. It's staff that's going to be providing you those recommendations.
Councillor Panamriff?
Yeah, um, so you, it says that the city attorney has reviewed this.
Correct.
Uh, I, you know, I looked through it and I, I I just feel we, uh, some of these seem to be kind of limiting. Um, so I'm just going to say, for example, uh, council discretionary funds. Um, one of the things it says there is that it can only be used for something that is open to all members of the public, um regardless of race, creed, blah, blah, blah. Um, and I'm, and I'm just wondering, like, if we were to say support a program that was needs-based and and only open to people of a a certain income or aimed at a certain vulnerable population, would that necessarily, um, would that maybe be uh, would the policy disallow that?
Hmm, that's a really good question. We can um take some recommendations from you and help maybe to to craft that that language to soften it up a little bit, if you if you wish to do so. Um, you will be seeing this policy probably um within a few short months. Again, uh, this is something that you need to be looking at in like May or June of every year.
Yeah, and I I got to say, I I love the, um, you know, I like, you know, there was the 20% thing. There was the six-month operating thing, the the mechanics of that. I just really appreciate the thought and um, but it just feels like that in the, in kind of built in here, there seemed to be some kind of prescriptive things that might kind of uh box us in when it comes to budget time. And I, and and not necessarily, it's just I felt like the that we haven't had a chance to um work through it like a, like we might be able to do in a study session. So um, I'm wondering, is the, the, does this have, okay, so for the, it's a CDBG grant. Uh, does this have to be in place by a certain date?
Um, it's my understanding that it's, it has to happen um probably really soon. That's um, I asked to have this policy, or excuse me, this resolution put on the following council meeting and um I was declined on that. It was, this is, it's an urgent matter.
Can I, can I follow up? Um, and and I'm just wondering procedurally, how difficult would it be to change, you know? So say, let's say we wanted to use discretionary funds for something, or we just ran into just a snag that we didn't expect as a result of this policy. I'm just wondering, uh, and it's budget time, right? So how 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 difficult would it be to amend the policy um in time? So it didn't just, you know?
It would not be difficult to amend, and I can tell you right now, um, looking at just the water fund alone, we are not meeting that um, that benchmark that is set up in the policy. Um, I look at the policy, like it's investment policy, excuse me, the financial management policy is, we're going to put this into play and we want to attain those goals. And if you're not, like I, like you said, um, you're apprehensive about the sideboards um regarding maybe the council discretionary funds, we can soften the language.
Yeah, so, sorry, Mayor, if I can just, just, I think, um, is, you know, if the language were more aspirational, um, you know, we're going to strive for, like it is in several places, we're going to strive for six months, we're going to strive for this, and it doesn't um limit us when it's budget time and we're trying to do the right thing. Um, I'd be a lot more comfortable with uh approving this um if it were just like guidelines as a plan. Um, if that, if that wording was softened softened up throughout, because I I just happened on something that I felt like I kind of had a handle on, but there might be more things that I just don't understand um how they might limit policy. And and if we don't have the time to do a study session uh before um, you know, confirming this, uh, it'd be, if we could just make it more guideline-ish.
Okay, um, if if we can, if you would like me to change some language in it now, and you can uh address that in a form of emotion, um, we can get this uh adopted and um I can hopefully make you feel much more comfortable about this. You know, the purpose of a policy is to provide sideboards, you know? Uh, I, I may not be here in five to 10 years. You may not be here in next five to 10 years. And this is, this is, these are the goals that you want your council to aspire to, to have a healthy um and financially stable ci- city.
So, uh, can I make a suggestion here? Um, what about, so I'm, what I'm hearing are the concerns that actually has crossed my mind as well is that typically when we set a policy like this, we do it uh through a process that starts with study session so that we can
Agreed.
Work through the piece of it. And I, and I hear uh that your, your hand is being forced here, Tessa, because uh in order for us to qualify, we need to have this um adopted. I um, I think that because policies are easily amended, um, I think that we could probably adopt this for the purpose of getting uh the the grant completed and then uh schedule a study session anytime between now and May. We don't, we don't need, we don't need to wait, um, if we don't want to wait. Uh, so if there's, if there's burning concerns, we can get it going sooner rather than later. But uh, but I I certainly think there's plenty of time over the course of the net, from now to May, uh, just to have a couple of study sessions and go through it, make amendments at that time. We don't need to wait to ma- to ma- to make amendments, is is my point.
I completely agree with you.
I like, uh, I really appreciate um the urgency that you put on this, Tessa, and that you're getting this so that we can uh take care of business. Uh, but I also appreciate Councillor Panamriff's point, and we can, we can get to that at any time. And I, and I, I'm hearing you, I'm hearing you being very open to that. So I, I think, I think we can proceed tonight and and then maybe move forward later.
Yeah, um, one thing that um I did, when I crafted this plan for the Medford Water Commission, which is, was distinctly different, um, I went through, I do believe, a couple of study sessions going through this. So that's my expectation, is to have a study session first. I, as a coun- if I was in your position as a councilperson, I would prefer to have a study session, to have this tailor-made to the needs that I perceive that the city um has.
The other, ob- obviously, the other benefit of that is to be able to uh get more community engagement on it as well. So um, uh, I appreciate, I appreciate the ability that we can just, we could pivot to this at any time, so.
Absolutely.
Sounds like, sounds like that's what you would have done anyway, so.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Um, everybody feel good about moving forward tonight? And if so, if there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, Councillor Byers? You could even include, by the way, you could include in in the motion that that the desire to do an upcoming study session. Um, uh, so anyway, uh, Councillor Byers, I'm calling on you.
Um, I move to approve resolution number 2024-104-r to adopt a comprehensive financial management policy for the City of Talent, which we would like to visit as a study session topic sometime between now and May of 2025.
Perfect. Uh, so I have a motion, uh, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2024-104-r establishing establishment of a financial management policy uh with the plan to hold a study session by May of 2025. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, if there is, is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yep, raise your hand, thank you, I appreciate it. And actually, this is a resolution. So, uh, roll call, please.
Councillor Coley?
Yeah.
Councillor Panamriff?
Yes.
Councillor Greider?
Yes.
Councillor Prestizo?
Yes.
Councillor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Excuse me, Councillor Byers?
Yes.
And C- Councillor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Madam Mayor.
Hey, I just want to ask you one more question on this item, Tess, I should have asked it earlier. Um, were there any requirements set forth by the CDBG grant in the, in the policy? Like, did they say your policy must have A, B, C, and D?
Oh, yes, um, it had, it had to include, um, it was the two CFR, I think it it refers to it by okay, it's part nine, um, no, excuse me, part four, two CFR, part 200. They wanted that included in here.
Okay, great. And that was the only, the only requirement that they had?
That's what I'm aware of. They, we, we sent them off a draft. I was ho- we were hoping that they would be happy with just having a draft, knowing that we were working our way towards it. But it turned out, um, my understanding, it ended up being a requirement. That's why it's, there was so much urgency involved in this.
All right, thank you, great work uh getting that to us in a timely fashion. That must have been another one of those crazy crunches that we're facing right now. Um, all right, uh, I, the next item on the agenda is 8.2, award of the Town Hall Restoration Request for Proposals. Staff?
Okay, um, in your packet, starting on page 122, is a, is a request to approve a contract with Osland Group for design build of Talent's historic town hall. In April of 2023, ZCS Engineering reported structural concerns with the Town Hall Foundation, including wood framing of the building is in contact with the soil, undersized post and beam systems, cracked mortar joints and dislodged stone blocks, uneven flooring due to foundation settlement, um, non-compliance with current snow, wind, and seismic codes. The building is recommended to remain unoccupied during wind or snow events. So as of like last night, we, nobody could have been in that building. A request for qualifications was issued on, in September of 2024. Two construction firms responded to the RFQ. Osland Group was selected after competitive scoring. The cost of the project includes a $22,500 lump sum design fee. Construction costs are to be determined at each design phase finalized after bid billing, excuse me, after bidding with an 8% overhead and profit fee. This project will be paid for with $250,000 that was budgeted for from the Talent Urban Renewal Agency. City staff is pursuing additional grants. City council approval is required due to the contract's potential cost. Staff recommends approval.
Uh, any questions, Councillor Cole?
Yeah, thanks, Tessa. Um, is this, so this is just for, when you say design build, it's just for design build of the foundation? So the steps in the process are just the foundation? This is not anything else in the building, correct?
That is, this is the only thing that's go- right now, well, first of all, this is for just the the foundation. We have determined that was the most critical thing with the building. Um, we couldn't do any finish like the plaster repairs or the painting in the inside of the building for, as a result of the fire without solving the foundation first, because it would have been double work. Um, we're also gathering quotes for so many other items that will, you'll learn about later that um the the bit, that the building um needs in addition to a foundation, it needs a new roof, it needs to be painted, it needs new flooring. Um, there, the list goes on. Right now, I do believe we have a spreadsheet alone with just about $200,000 in estimates, not including the foundation work. I do not know how much this foundation's going to cost until we get Osland Group onboard, and I'm hoping that it's not going to um take up the entire, entire $250,000. But there's always that possibility depending on um the requirements for this, like the wind and the snow and seismic um codes.
Thank you.
Councillor Panamriff?
Yeah, so that's where I got hung up on this, because it sounded like they, I, I mean, we didn't, we didn't actually get the contract or the proposal in the packet, which might have been, which might have been helpful for future. It was just a letter. Yeah, it was just a letter. So I read this and it sounded, it almost sounded, well, I just make up stories in my mind. It sounded like that this, this, they were going to do the design and they were essentially going to be the prime, and then they were going to contract out for the other work for the foundation and that they were going to take 8%. And then I was doing, okay, what is 8%? And I said, oh, what, two, over 2 million? Okay, so I went a little crazy, but um, I, I'm trying to understand, or is this, is this firm going to do the construction for the foundation as well?
The, actually, they'll be, be bidding that out, that's my understanding. They'll, they'll, they, at first, I didn't think this was supposed to go to council, because I was looking, okay, it's going to be 22,008% of um what the construction cost would be, and that would likely be under Gary's purchasing authority. And Gao Ying had uh pointed out to me, and she said, well, Tess, you know, they're paying for the construction work. And I'm like, okay, I got to pull this together rather quickly. So, yes, it was my misstep that I didn't include a copy of the um RFQ. And in the future, this is, this is my first time dealing with a cons, you know, a CIP from a construction point of view. Um, there's a lot of steps that I'm, I'm still learning. I'm cutting my teeth on this one.
That's totally.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's totally fine. Um, I, I mean, I'm very, I, you know, I'm, I'm confident that this is probably the 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 better firm to do the work. I would have liked, not so much the RFQ, I would like to have seen the actual proposal that was awarded um to understand the scope of work. Um, what isn't clear to me exactly, I mean, you outlined the need very beautifully, but the scope of work that we are on the hook for paying for. And what I'm afraid of is we come and we say, okay, I do the design, and we're basically, we're authorizing you to go and fix the foundation. We think it's going to be $250,000, but what if it's a lot more than that? So I'm, it, that concerns me. I'm really comfortable going ahead with the, what they need to do, the design thing. But I'd kind of like to see the results of that and those cost estimates before we go ahead and authorize $250,000, which could turn in, potentially could turn into a lot more. And then maybe we'll want to make some decisions. Um, so, yeah.
What we can do, we could do is we can, um, I can provide Gary um updates, so he can include that in his weekly report, if that's something that you would like to see, um, like a, a maybe monthly update on Town Hall. I'm really hoping that it's not, they, I'm really hoping it's not going to go over the $250,000, because they did ask me the question, how much money do you have? And I said, it's a hard stop at 250.
Can I just, so just to wrap up my, so what I'm wondering is, is if um, after they do the, the 200, the $22,500 work, which is the design and the, and all of that, w- at that point, will we have a more solid idea of the scope and the cost? And can we hold off, can the council hold off on authorizing, you know, anything above the 22, 500 um until that point to decide whether this is something we want to take on?
Okay, let's look at it this way. Um, do you want to do a not to exceed of 22.5?
Yeah, I mean, 22,500 for them to, to just to do that, yeah. So they do the design work, um, and then they, then we have a lot more information about the scope of work we might be, we might be taking on.
Yeah, um, the one thing is about this is that the foundation is ultra-critical to the health of this building. And it's something, if you want to um save, you know, the City of Talent, I, I look at this, this is the City of Talent's crown jewel downtown. It's, it's an absolutely lovely building, been there, standing there for 125 years. And doing this work, we have to do it.
Yeah, I I want to interject here, Tessa, um, because I, I'm not hearing anything that suggests that we don't want to do the work. Here's what I'm hearing, and and I think I, I understand, and I think this is important. Um, I thi- I think what I'm hearing is to authorize the 22.50, which you don't need an authorization for that, actually, because I think that's already approved.
Yes.
You move forward with the, with the uh original part of the design. And then, and then when we have a contract drawn up based on their findings, that when that contract comes before us for an approval, that we actually get a copy of the contract to, to look at. Um, so what I appreciate, um, the point that, and really, this is my hangup uh on this as well, is I appreciate the point that we're being asked to aw- award a contract, but we don't have a copy of the contract.
We haven't negotiated a contract yet.
Right, because you can't do that until you get to the 22.500. So I don't think this is going to hold up anything to just, for you guys to just go ahead and move forward with the initial design phase. And then when there is a contract and for us to award, um, uh, we would be awarding a contract. Otherwise, the emotion is really, we're if we're not doing that, if we're not awarding $250,000 for a contract tonight, which it sounds like we're not, because there is no contract, well, we would, then the alternative would be for, and it, I, believe me, ta- I'm taking feedback, the alternative could be we are authorizing $250,000 for the city to negotiate a contract. That, that's what would actually be happening. And um, so the, my, my issue with the motion is that, that, that it's asking us to do something that we're not actually doing. Um, so if we, if we are going to, does that make sense? We don't have a contract to award.
No, we don't.
Yeah, so um, so if we do get a contract to award, I'd want to see a copy of the contract. Yeah, so, um, so if we do get a contract to award, I'd want to see a copy of the contract. Otherwise, if you, if you're asking the staff for, I mean, if you're making a recommendation for the council to award the staff two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to negotiate a contract, um, that would be a different motion.
Gotcha.
Yeah, uh, so, um, I, I hope that makes sense. And if anybody thinks of another kind of emotion like that, like I, I don't want to suggest that those are the only options, but those seem like the obvious options.
Because. Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to, we're going to, we've sent, we're going to send out the intent to, the, the intent to award. And basically, um, we're asking for your approval for the intent to award the contract.
Okay, so that's the recommendation you're making now, is that you're asking the council to prov, uh, provide you with approval for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the intent to award. And, and, and so would it, does it feel, I just want to ask you, Tessa, uh, would it cause any difficulty in the process to just go ahead and move forward with the twenty-two five hundred piece? Get the assessment, get the contract and bring a contract back? Do you think it'll hold it up? Like, is there, is there a reason why we wouldn't do it that way, as opposed to doing it with, um, just awarding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a contract we haven't seen?
We can always try. Um, we, I can, I can reach out to Osland, um, and, um, group tomorrow and have that discussion with them. Um, I, I do, I would like to at least to have the opportunity to, uh, award, award the, you know, go into, award the contract to them for the twenty-two-five. Um, we need to have them get involved, so we can have an estimate, how much this is really going to cost. The twenty-two-five will shine light. And it may be significantly less. It may not be as bad as we think it is. Who knows? But it also could be a heck of a lot worse. I mean, I don't know. I just, I just see by looking at the building itself, that, you know, the exterior, the foundation, um, you know, what ZCS had to say about the, the, the wind and the snow, snow loads on the building. And I've seen what, what the inside of the building looks like as a result of the foundation, um, how to say, settling. It's a, it's a big deal.
I just have one more comment, if I may, before, uh, entertain a motion. Um, you know, I, I, I am authentically not wanting to hold you up, so that's why I'm asking those two. One will move you forward right now, uh, without a contract, without seeing a contract. The other one could hold this up until our next meeting when there's, when there's a contract. So I want to make sure that you, you understand, uh, that's what I'm, what I'm suggesting. And if, i, if you're concerned about that, we should know that. We should know that from you tonight. Um, and the other thing is, I almost feel like there's a, this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was awarded in the first place um, that you're referencing in your report has a motion associated with it. And I'm not even sure that, that you don't already have the authority to spend that money. Uh, but I, but I'm not sure.
What gets, what gets interesting is, um, I was talking to Gary about this. You know, we thought it would be a better idea that the, the actual repairs to Town Hall would be best accounted for using the City of Talent accounting software, because of the robust nature of it, because we have a project module. The Tura, um, financial statements are all made via Excel. And it's very rudimentary in nature. Um, this is, this work, any work that's going to be done on the, the Town Hall Foundation, we're going to have to address this in the form of a supplemental budget for the, for the expense, expense, that's going to happen, um, I want to say. Yes, there's, there's, there's a bunch of moving parts on this, but, and we're aware of that.
Yeah, we've had to do that before, um, but I don't, let me stop you from explaining it. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that, because I, I, I have experience with that, but maybe others don't. So the supplemental budget, uh, can you explain the supplemental budget piece of it?
Um, well, it depends on, um, how much money we're going to be spending via the, uh, this is all going to be happening out of the general fund, the, the revenues that's coming in. We did not budget for the revenues coming in. We did not budget for the expenses associated with the Town Hall foundation, or actually any expenditures related to Town Hall for the, uh, repair work and the restoration work.
Yeah, and you're, so you're going to do, you're going to, um, e- essentially, if I remember this correctly, you're sort of like loaning Tura the money, um, for the purpose of paying for this, and then Tura reimburses the city, right?
Actually, I was, I was, I was going to approach having, well, it could be that way, if you want to look at it that way. I would, would have preferred that the Tura would, would transfer or grant the city the monies. But, you know, mo, move it in that sort of fashion, that the entire two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because we will use every bit of it for Town Hall.
Yeah, we've done this before, like, we've done similar processes between the city and Tura before, but
I have this.
Yeah, what I was, yeah, what I was suggesting is, um, that I think that is already authorized. And I think it's worth going back and looking at the record for that, but I could be wrong. Uh, anyway, counselor, I, I don't think it changes the direction that you would give tonight, though.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counsel Panamare?
Yeah, I, I just want to concur. I, my memory says that Tura, um, authorized two hundred and fifty thousand towards Town Hall uh, in a budget years ago.
No, this, this year.
This year, okay. And, um, yeah, but I think, well, we've been talking about it for years. Um, but Tess, a question that, so supplemental budget would be for the city of talent, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, can I just make a comment?
Sure, please.
I, I just want to say, I, I get, um, that, that many people see it, uh, this building as the town, as, as the cra, as the, the crown jewel of the town. Um, and I am, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to fix it, I, I think is a good investment. If that number were to climb towards a million or, or something like that, um, that would be a harder decision when we're talking money that you could build a new building with. Um, then that starts to become a, let's take a step back and think about this question for me personally. I would not want to see, you know, huge amounts of money, uh, go towards this, this one building when the city has other needs. Um, that's just a, a personal opinion that I have. But I, but I just want to say all appreciation to Tessa for taking this by the horns and, and being really, um, proactive and also approaching this with really good stints and good stewardship. I, I do appreciate.
Thank you, and I, please real, I realize that I understand there is absolutely no revenue stream for this building. There's none. The only revenue stream is the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that Tura is been so gracious to award towards the building. It's going to be a a very heavy fundraising that's needs to occur, a lot of grant writing. It's going to take, um, a great amount of community involvement to want to bring this building back to, um, a form of repair.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, since that came up for the record, just because I know that, um, that, uh, these discussions, um, are open to the public. Um, that, that has always been my, that, that's always been my understanding is that, uh, that it may rise to a million, but there's that, this is an incremental process that'll be phased out, that'll include a lot of fundraising, a lot of community support, a lot of grant writing. And so, I mean, I think we can expect that it's going to be somewhere around a million dollars to restore that building, um, or, or somewhere in there. Uh, but what we're being tasked with tonight is allocating that two hundred and fifty thousand towards a foundation repair.
Correct, that is the basis. The rest of the repairs, or let's say the restoration pieces, that can come in phases. The, the important thing is to get that foundation shored up. And then the next step is to make sure that that roof is doing its job. Um, the roof is at the end of its useful life. If we get the foundation in place, you get the roof, then you start taking a look at all the different pieces and parts, and then looking at different grant opportunities and saying, let's say, for instance, T-Mobile Grant, okay, I have stairs for forty-five thousand dollars. We'll, we'll take those stairs and apply for the T-Mobile Grant. Find, um, let's say, painting of the building. That's when we reach out to the West Family Foundation. Uh, we'll be going back to, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office. Uh, we're looking everywhere to try to find monies for this building.
Yeah, great. It sounds to me like we're looking at probably like a three to five-year project.
I hope not. I want to get this done before I retire.
Okay, good for you. Well, I wish you the best.
Did you hear that? If we make it last a long time, she won't leave us.
Yeah, that's right. We'll drag that, we'll drag the Town Hall project out, whoever.
Um, it's, it's probably going to be two to three years, my guess, this is my guess. It all depends on grants. That's, that's where it all depends on.
We should sit and have a bet someday about this, because I think it'll be, it'll be fun to see how, uh, how long it actually takes. Anyway, okay, so, um, is there any more questions? Does everybody feel pretty clear about where this is all going? All right, uh, so I don't think you need action from us tonight, yeah, twenty, unless, unless you're asking us for that, for that allocation. And then I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, it's under, it's underneath Gary's spending authority, so it, it was my thought that this was going to be exceed, exceeding his spending authority.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll, I'll chat with him in this, in the morning.
And I would invite you to take, uh, a moment to look at the original motion, because actually, I think you probably already have approval, uh, for the rest of the funding.
Okay, great.
All right, it might just be the contract that Gary's asking us to, to approve.
Yeah.
Not the money. Um, all right, that, uh, so if there's no, I don't think there's any further action at, at this point in time. Um, do you want a motion just in case for that twenty-two-five?
Um, I do, I do want a motion, um, authorized, because it has to be the notice of intent to award. Okay, Gary actually did that. He, he was actually, okay, I think, I think we're good.
Yeah, I do too. Um, okay. Thank you, Tessa, and, and I want to say, I know that there's a lot of people that are going to be really excited about this restoration project, uh, over the long haul. And I, and I appreciate that, that you're passionate about it.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move back to the agenda. And item number uh, nine is commission and committee reports. I have a planning meeting next week, so, uh, I'll give one at the, the next meeting. Um, and the last, our class planning meeting was canceled. I bet Dave will say something similar. Um, are there any other committees or commissions that want to report out? Okay, uh, Counsel Perry Miller?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so T-PAC met earlier in the month, and, um, they made a recommendation that, um, one of their alternate members, Megan Smith, become a full member. And I'm just realizing that I don't think that recommendation made it to you. Um, I think it made it to Hector and Gary, but, um, that might just be like a process thing. Um, so I will forward that to you after this meeting, and hopefully that can be something that we get on to a future consent calendar. Um, they also talked about doing the next artist open house for the City Hall foyer, and, um, we're still trying to figure out specifically if this date will work for staff and for that space, but they're hoping to make it happen on Sunday, December fifteenth, early afternoon. So we'll keep folks posted if that works. And those are the highlights.
And so let me just ask you really quick, what, uh, which, which two appointments are they again?
Uh, it's one appointment, so Megan was an alternate member. And, um, we had a resignation from Kathy Doris, and so the recommendation was to move Megan into that full member position.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm tracking all the way up to this meeting. That's a consent item. And I would, if you, if somebody wants to make a motion, I would entertain the motion on that. That is not a controversial item. And, uh, I, 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 but it, but if you feel comfortable that T-PAC is okay waiting another period, that's also okay.
But yeah, I think it's my fault that we just, they just missed getting that information to you. Is what I'm realizing. So I'll forward you the message so that you have it.
That's fine, okay. Uh, Counsel Byers?
Um, Parks Com, Parks Commission meeting, business is pretty light now that, um, the big Chuck Roberts revisioning master plan was, has that recommendation has gone to council, but they did, um, discuss the great turnout for the open house in October for, um, for the community and, um, just felt like they had a lot of good conversations with folks, um, both about the master plan revisioning and about other parks topics, so, um, hopefully we'll have some more open houses with not just parks, but other committees and commissions where good conversations can be had with community members. Um, we also have a really cool bench that's, I'm not bench picnic table, that's been a long time coming, it was funded by a grant and is part of a collaborative effort with Talent Maker City and Coalition Fortaleza, which will be arriving in most likely Chuck Roberts Park. Um, if not that one, then another public park sometime soon. It can, um, not only is it beautiful and incorporates artwork by a local artist, but it can accommodate, um, folks needing to use a wheelchair at the table, so, nice inclusive touch.
Very cool. Okay, Counsel Colay?
Yeah, thank you. Um, a lot of our progress was shared, um, some of the agenda items earlier, so that's something that's been on our mind. Um, working on planning Arbor Day next year, planting project most likely at the elementary school, but still tentatively figuring that out, and we'll bring that to you all when we're ready. Um, I did have a question too about, um, members. I know of somebody who applied, I think a couple of months ago to be on the Urban Forestry Committee, but I haven't heard anything yet, and, um, the chair Julie hadn't heard anything yet, so I don't know where that is in the pipeline.
I think, um, I, I think I spoke with them this week. Uh, yeah, yeah.
Cool, I will pass that along at the next.
Struggling for the name of the person, but I'm pretty sure I, yeah, interviewed.
Was it Haley?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then ongoing work on the master plan, hopefully that's going to be finished soon, so we can get that to, to you all. Um, yeah, that's about it.
Great. Any other report out? All right, um, so we'll go ahead and move us on then to.
Sorry, I, I have.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, um, yeah, Together for Talent also, uh, met, we're planning to do, um, an emergency preparedness, uh, workshop um, in early, mid-December, and I'll have that together for the community announcement at the next meeting. Um, also, uh, at the RVMPO, which is the Rogue Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization. Um, the big news is the shift, um, in funding away from it, uh, the SDVG, uh, grants towards, um, the, uh, towards gas tax and how those will be allocated. And I don't know if Gao Ying, if you're, if you're still here on the phone, but, uh, there was, uh, um, the technical advisory committee meeting, uh, met, and, uh, Gaiying's a member of that, and talking about the ways to use that money, um, and to distribute that money. And one of the considerations is distributing the gas tax money, um, on the basis of population, possibly with a floor, which would mean, uh, that instead of talent having to compete for big projects, which talent typically does not, um, the city would get, uh, a chunk of money, um, guaranteed, which, uh, I think is along the lines of, um, I, uh, I think it's, I'm looking at like forty-four thousand dollars, uh, a year, something like that. But there might actually be a floor, and I see Gaiying's hand is up and, and, um, she's, uh, more aware of this than me.
Good, Gaiying? Now, um, um, Counselor Pano, Pano, Maraf, you summarized really well, actually, and, uh, I can just add on that, basically, they discussed, um, several ways. One way is based on population, and the other way, just like evenly distributed. And then why is like, uh, just give us all fifty thousand, and, uh, for talent, they, for distribute the base on, of population will get forty-four thousand. So if, so if it's to distribute the, duh, uh, within all the jurisdictions, the fifty thousand, so for us, below fifty thousand, we won't compete again. So for the bigger cities, like I made for, they will be getting, they will be redistribute the remaining gas funds for, based on population, so they will get a little bit, um, extra that way, and so anyways, we will be. we will be bring back to the table for next meeting and um, yeah, I think uh, either way, we'll get a little bit of money. Instead of, from last few years, we don't appear to have a, a lot of the com- competing power.
Thank you, I am. Okay, uh, so um, I'm going to go ahead and move us to uh, other business, and we're going to be doing a look ahead. Uh, Gary won't be here to work it, uh, to look at the look ahead uh, that he had scheduled, but uh, I know uh, Council Byers has a couple of items for uh, for this agenda item, and so I'm going to just hand it over to Council Byers. Oh, Hector, are you going to do the look ahead?
I was going to support, so I have it in front of me. And like, it's Councilor Byers uh, in that process.
All right, sounds good. All right, so I'll just hand it over to Council Byers and with your support, Hector. Uh, you're muted.
I'm not touching on all of this look ahead, but I did want to give an update from the subcommittee that is taking care of Gary's um, three sixty evaluation, since we're getting close to his um, year anniversary with us. Um, so lucky. So the mayor and Councilor Perry Miller and myself met with um, Adrian from RV Cog today and took a look at the uh, um, evaluation tool, review tool that we used with um, Jordan Brooklyn in our last evaluation that we did, and um, it, uh, not much has changed, but for those who don't remember, it's really fantastically broken out into different sections of um, input from staff, from community partners, from council, and self-evaluation. And uh, folks are given uh, a competency that they are evaluating, and then a number of examples for each one, and they can do a rating, and that is all um, structured really nicely in a, a survey. What um, I wanted to bring up with the rest of council tonight, it are a couple questions, points. One, just giving you that update, but two, asking um, how you all feel about moving ahead with this assessment tool. I just checking in to see if there were any, um, there was any input to carry back to Adrian at RV Cog, so um, I'll start with that, and then I've got a follow-up for, for that, this topic after this. You're muted, Nick.
Can I add a little uh, to that question as well?
Yes.
Um, I think uh, one of the things uh, we'd like to see um, answered tonight is, in the past, uh, the um, the subcommittee has um, chosen the tool, and then it comes to the council, um, it gets presented to the council in uh, sort of that training, that discussion about best practices. Um, we just want to reaffirm that you guys are still, that the council is still um, okay with us in that practice of bringing the assessment tool to you guys. Um, and I mean, really, it's the same one as we did last time, except for a couple of little tweaks. Uh, rather than bring the assessment tool, make a dis- like, make a decision as a council um, about, on changes, and then have the final draft adopted. This will just save us one meeting. Uh, we just want to make sure we're still authorized to pick the tool. That's really all I'm asking. Any feedback? Uh, okay, I'll, I'll just ask for consent. Does anybody object to the subcommittee choosing the tool, uh, tool to bring to the council? And I can't see my whole um, panel. So if you do, please speak up. Oh, there we go. Okay, sounds like we have the authority uh, to do that. Okay, sorry, Anna, go ahead.
No, it's okay. Um, so that was my second layer. So third layer, um, one of, one of the sections for outreach to participate in this evaluation are um, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, or Councilor Perry Miller, it's um, community partners, I believe, is the term that's used, and something that I brought up in the meeting is, do we want last time we did this process, we sent that portion of the assessment out to just an array of community partners, um. I am checking my email to see if I received a list. Um, I did. I can send that to you individually, so we don't um, we don't create any issues, but I had suggested that instead, perhaps we format a list that is a bit more intentional in who we're reaching out to. Um, my thoughts had been um, looking through the, looking at this through a lens of who are we working with on long-term outcomes that we would like to have ongoing input about that working relationship with, um. In last time of the Fire District Five did fill out a, a survey, and I was suggesting similar um, outreach to other partners like the school district, like um, well, I rattled all these off hours ago, and now I'm forgetting them. You're muted, Mayor.
I was just laughing, you were on fire earlier.
Yeah, I know. It'll, it'll all come back to me, I'm sure, but like the school districts, like um, any, any entity we have an IGA with, um, I know we had, we had said FEMA is a bad example, um, just because it would probably be difficult to get a response. Um, I was thinking of um, other municipalities that were doing Bear Creek Restoration on, just, just as examples. So I'm wondering also if you all might like to shoot the mayor any suggestions you have to be added to that list for community partnership assessment outreach, um, and she'll make sure that Adrian gets that. And I think the next part of that is just discussing the timing of how this evaluation will go. We're trying to get it wrapped up by the end of December, so that um, it can be processed and presented in January, which means it sounds like the evaluation tool is coming to be presented to us the first council meeting in December. Yeah. And I think I'm done.
Great, thank you, Anna. Um, great update. Um, all right, so uh, is there, you want to just go ahead and flash that look ahead? We've got a few more minutes, so we can take a quick look at it.
This is these are the items on just December fourth, City Council meeting. They populated some of the things that we were talking about, um, while Counselor Byers was uh, presenting.
Oh, great. Hey, speaking of appointments, really quick, uh, I'm, I um, I left a message for Haley, then uh, Council Colley, I want to let you know that. Um, I, I spoke to, I had a couple of other interviews, but uh, with Haley, I, I left her a voicemail, and she hasn't called me back yet, so I'll try again tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
We'll move on to the next.
Yeah.
Uh, December Tura, we expect the Tura audit to be on the agenda. Then December eighteenth will be the last regular council meeting, adoption of mass timber code amendment and award of advanced metering infrastructure. I believe Council Byers hands up.
Council Byers? Thank you, Hector.
Um, yeah, I'm wondering if we are considering rescheduling this study session that we missed today for December.
I'll follow up with with Gary about that.
Thank you.
Council Colley?
Yeah, am I remembering correctly, do we, is there a December thirty-first deadline to award the contract for the skate park that's out for RFP, or is that later?
I don't have it on here, Councilor Colley, so you're correct. We'll have to is uh, is Gao Ying still in, in the audience?
Yes.
Yes, I am. Yes, we, we do need your word as at the um, Hector. I remember, I think we're going to put it together with the December eighteenth.
Okay.
So I have two words.
Since everyone's watching me type, it, it uh, makes me nervous.
Yeah, we could tell with that crazy typing you were doing there. Um, all right.
And Mayor, pardon me, the, before Gary left, he asked to bring these two items to the, to the council for discussion. The first item being scheduling the first meeting in twenty-twenty-five. The first meeting for twenty-twenty-five is scheduled on New Year's Day, January first. And new councilors are traditionally sworn in at that first council meeting of the year. And City Manager Milliman has suggested to move the first meeting of twenty-twenty, twenty-five to January eighth, twenty-twenty-five to accommodate uh, the holiday.
Council Byers?
Um, Gary and I also spoke a bit about this in our leadership meeting today. January eighth is the regular Parks Commission meeting. Um, so Gary felt that any other day, that first full week of January would work well. Just putting that out there, and then you were there, Mayor. We also double-checked, um, it can, it can just be the first meeting. It doesn't have to be the first regular meeting of the year where council members can be sworn in.
Yeah. So the charter allows us to swear in uh, at the first meeting. It doesn't call for the first regular meeting, so we can set this day, this first meeting for an alternative date. Uh, Councilor Panamareth?
Yeah, what about just skipping the first meeting of January and, and starting with the fifteenth? The second regular meeting.
Uh, Council Byers?
There was a time constraint with Tura specifically.
Yeah.
I didn't understand.
We need to have a special joint Tura and City Council meeting because of um, a very tight timeline that Tura is working on with, remind me, Mayor, it's connected.
It's with the CDBG grant.
Yeah.
Oh, before the fifteenth?
Before the second, that's right. So we need to, we need to have uh, everybody sworn in um, so that we can uh, proceed on the uh, the crazy deadlines that are being imposed on us now by uh, that CDBG grant.
But.
So the, so the alternatives are uh, the eighth or another date, um, not in conflict with the parks. Uh, Council Byers, you want to make a suggestion?
Sorry, can I just follow up the, because I'm having trouble understanding. If we just need people sworn in, what if we had a short meeting prior to the Tura meeting, swear everybody in, do the, on the fifteenth, do the Tura meeting on the fifteenth, and do the City Council meeting on the fifteenth?
We could do that. That, that could be an alternative. I think uh, Gary's asking us for a meeting and um, uh, so that, that's certainly one alternative.
The reason
Council Byers?
Sorry, can I just?
Sure.
Just, I just want to, I just, I'm worried about, you know, getting quorum also, if we, if we play around with the dates.
Uh, Council Byers?
Um, I think to that point, if I'm remembering correctly, there is a hard and fast January thirty-first deadline to have a significant amount of work completed, that he requires direction from Tura and council on, and so he's hoping to get that direction as early as he can.
I'm definitely not worried about getting a quorum. Uh, but I do, I, I do want to accept uh, Gary's recommendation to set another date. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can all agree on a date on the week of the sixth. Are there any recommendations for that?
The sixth or the seventh.
Any conflict with the seventh? Can everybody make January seventh?
No, there's a conflict with Together, Together for Talent has a meeting on the seventh.
How about the sixth?
T-PAC?
Councilor uh, Brighter?
Really quick, sorry, Nicole. Uh, T-PAC meets at five, so they could probably be over in time for council if needed.
Council Brighter?
Is it um, allowed or possible to check with the new counselor that's going to be sworn in at their availability for that meeting?
Uh, yes, and we do have time at the next meeting to take up this matter. This doesn't need to be done tonight, so that's a good suggestion. Um, and uh, Gary will be here uh, to offer more clarity on what, what his specific needs are. Um, and uh, so that, that'll be really helpful. Thank you for that, Council Brighter. Council Panamareth?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Together for Talent meeting starts at five. It's usually done by six, so a six forty-five or a six thirty meeting would be fine on that Tuesday as well.
Hector, would you make a note for us to take this matter up at the next meeting?
On December fourth?
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anything else for the look ahead?
The joint meeting?
The joint meeting, uh, which one?
Pardon me, uh, scheduling a joint meeting with the, with the City Council.
I think we should probably, because that, th- these are related items. Let's go ahead and do that on December fourth as well.
Okay. Noted.
Right. Okay, uh, I think that might be everything. Does anybody else have anything for other? Let me make sure. Yeah, okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is written communications. There are none, so we'll adjourn this meeting at nine twenty-six. Thank you, everybody.